I just want to be sure, thank you.
When construction is finished, we'll leave a technology consultant on site for eximon.
Should have had that all these past couple of years to make the next person's job easier.
I know.
Good evening. I called the meeting of the East Bridgewater Public Schools School Committee to session May 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. You have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. McKinnon, second by Peter Furia. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First order of business this evening is the annual organization of the school committee as required by policy. Oh, the pledge, that's right. Fudge of allegiance, please stand.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This usually isn't my jobs.
I know.
And thank you, E.B. Ham, for supporting our school committee meetings. First action to be taken is the election of officers. Do you have a motion for a chair?
My motion for Gordon McKinnon to be chair.
Motion for Gordon. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Peter Furia. Any discussion?
Okay. Does a person have to accept it?
No.
Is that the discussion?
That's it, I guess.
Discussion?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes to the chair, Mr. McKinnon.
I like that a lot better than there.
There you go.
Okay. Next up is the position of vice chair. I would nominate Becky as vice chair.
I'll second.
Okay. You want to accept or deny, or?
I'll accept.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Becky.
Congratulations, Gordon.
Okay, and we do need a secretary. Anyone want to volunteer for secretary, or do you want me to?
Have a motion.
Have a motion? Anyone want to move?
You can motion.
Okay. Well, I would, I would move Ellen be our secretary.
I'll second.
Ellen, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Sure, I'll do it.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. And treasurer, I believe is always the superintendent, and the school clerk, I believe, but, well, I'm not, I don't want to say by default, but typically would be Mike to be our school clerk. Do I have to make a motion for that? Oh, so first I have to move that you be the treasurer.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Okay, aye. And now, we would nominate Mike to be our clerk. Anyone?
Second.
Second. Good, now we're getting into the rhythm, okay. Any discussion? Okay.
Does a great job.
Yes, absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations. I think it's congratulations. The appointments to standing subcommittees. Now, does everyone have, they have the list in your packet?
We have the correct list.
I'm sorry, the correct list?
Dan and Amy both took the incorrect list out of their packet. We have the correct list. It was in our mailboxes.
Well, do they still need a correct one?
No, they have the correct.
They have it now?
And you should have the correct one, too. That's the incorrect one.
I'm not sure how I identify correct or incorrect.
The incorrect one was the one with the three, three on the bargaining subcommittees that had three people, but the correct one has two people.
Oh, great, okay, I got that.
And also the addition of the CCC at the bottom, a CCC liaison.
Oh, yes, okay. My thought on this is, the easiest thing to do is to go around, at least on the first go around, say, you know, which committee would you like to be on, and then if we need more people, we'll ask for volunteers. The whole idea, to me, is that we all have to be on a subcommittee, just because that makes sense, and then next year, you might want to be on a different subcommittee, just so that you have exposure to that part of how we operate. And if we start at the top of the list, which is legislative liaison, I know the last number of years, it's been Mrs. Pennington. Are you in agreement to stay in that?
I'll still do it.
Great, excellent. All right. Standing committee to update policy. I know you've been on it for years and years.
I would still do it.
Still, okay. Anyone else have a?
I'm in the middle of updating stuff. I don't want to stop now.
Okay, thank you, that's a lot of work.
It is.
Any, anyone else want to jump on that bandwagon?
Are you going to continue on it, Gordon?
I was, I didn't, I didn't want to get in anyone else's way. If somebody else wanted to be on it, that's fine.
I'll be on it with Ellen.
Okay.
If you're, are you looking to stay on it as well, Gordon? Because you're going to have new roles and responsibilities, obviously.
Yeah, I'll be happy. Trying to think with the new members, that might be a good, a good position.
That's where.
One of the new members.
Yeah.
Either one of you have a open to that?
If it lends itself to, just pure, like, more, is it morally more administrative in functionality?
Some of it.
Obviously, I don't know all the policies yet, right, so there's a learning curve, but.
Yes.
Happy to lend my support.
Some is administrative, some of it's not. Like, we have to meet and talk about stuff sometimes.
Okay, sure, I can do it.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
Well, that, and well, one other little tidbit is that every year, we're on a three-year review cycle for this policy manual, but this year, there's, the MASC revised their entire policy manual, so we're kind of on a pause for going through our three-year review cycle, because the whole policy manual is in the process of being updated from the MASC and comparing to ours. We'll have to meet sometimes, but you'll see. If you go on it, you'll see.
Notice she told you that after you were accepted.
[laughing]
Good move, Ellen. Well done.
I didn't do that intentionally.
So, that committee would be Peter, Amy, and Ellen. Okay? You got that, Mike? Okay. School committee representative to Reed's Collaborative, typically that's Superintendent Legault, set. Representative to North River, Superintendent Legault. Are all those collaboratives, the boards are still made up of superintendents and all?
Yes.
There's no more members of committees or whatever on there?
None in our, none in ours.
Okay. School committee representative to Town Insurance Committee, now, that was Mr. Walker. I, you know what, I don't, I've never done that role, so I don't know what's entailed there. Maybe Dan knows, you know, on the town insurance.
Well, in 10 years that I've been on the committee, we've never done anything with it. It's just there as a placeholder in case we need to do something with it.
Okay, I'm all over that one.
Is that, is that because it's required by MASC for there to be a subcommittee about something?
That is not a requirement by MASC.
So why do we have it?
Yeah.
Like, if we look at that.
We're on, we belong to the GIC, and it has been conversation with, like, our union, our contractual bodies down here in the town, to see if we wanted to go out and possibly find a better deal, and there hasn't been a better deal going outside the GIC. So I think that that's what that is, is so that there'd be a liaison from the school committee, because it's financial to go and listen to if GIC folds and Mayflower comes in. Okay, we're going to Mayflower.
Good.
You know.
So is it best to just keep it on there, or does it, could it be added if needed?
I think we should just keep it.
I think, my thought would be, let's, let's keep these as they're written, but I certainly would be open to reviewing them at some later date to say, okay, let's, maybe there's something that's not on here, like, I have a thought, something that's not on here, that maybe we should add, but I wouldn't bog us down right now to get into that whole discussion. So I, my suggestion would be, we keep what's here, and then make notes if you think something could be eliminated, or something that should be added. Hearing that, that's a great opportunity, Dan, if you want to jump on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's great. Reven's Hearing Officer, that's typically the chair.
Yes.
Okay. Bargaining Subcommittee for Certified Professional Contract.
I don't want to be on it.
Right now, that's, I'm sorry, you're going to stay on it?
Yes, please.
Okay. And Becky, you're on it?
I already am. I don't need to be if someone else wants to do that.
Okay.
But I'm happy to stay.
Where do we stand with that contract? Are those the ones you're wrapping up, or have they wrapped up this year?
Well, this one, oh, Gordon, so the professional contract, that's, I know, he asked you, but it's, this one opens up next year.
Oh, it's next year.
The one for professional contract, right?
Those are the teachers.
Those are the teachers? I thought the teachers were, oh, oh, okay. All right, and what, what's the timeline that those would typically start, theoretically end?
They would, they would send us a letter in, like, October, November, saying that they are ready to engage into negotiations, and then we would sit down with the attorneys. The attorneys come in and we do go over the, you know, timelines.
And?
Most of the time, just the ground rules on the first night, and just getting some calendar dates in place, and then we go from there.
I know it's almost impossible to guess how long it's going to take, but typically, is it wrapped up by March or April?
We try to get it done by, we, we try very hard to get it done by town meeting, so that the budget, we can get something to the budget, so we can reflect that here it is, and this is what we're going to need. This is our largest, as we know.
Yep, okay, all right.
Typically, oh, sorry, sir. Typically, what we do, because there's, so there's two, two, and two on these contract subcommittees, we do that because if there's, if one person can't go, then the other person goes.
Yeah.
So it's not like a technical subcommittee, it's just one person.
Okay.
And just to set expectations, it could go for hours on different nights.
Okay.
Hours.
Hearing that, does that keep you really interested in it?
My only thought on that is that if it were to, obviously unpredictably, go longer, and there is no guarantee I'm up next year, so I don't know, maybe it makes sense for someone who would be on the committee for sure, for longer, to be in that role in the event negotiations go longer than town election.
Well, I'm in that same boat, so.
Right.
So, Peter, is that something that you'd be interested in?
Can Peter be in, can you?
I think for the certified professional contract.
That's for teachers.
That's teachers only, right?
Yeah.
I potentially could be.
Just as a side, there have been, there are times, and Gordon, you were on the last one, and Ellen, I think you were there, too. There are times that we go in, myself, Gina, John, and your, and the attorney, and the attorney is, with the teachers' negotiation, the attorney is there at all times. He'll sit, and their MTA rep is there at all times. So, and we do notes at the end of every meeting, and even the meetings that we have now, and we send them out, so that you would have notes. If, if you wanted to start the year right now and say, yes, I want to be on it, there would be notes, and you'd have the opportunity to call in the next morning, or the notes would go out, and you say, this is what was said last night, what do you think about this? You can weigh in. So, I mean, if you wanted to stay on it now and then think about it, you could certainly do so. Just so you know, that, that, that the, that the school district's attorney works for you, and he, that's his job, or her job, whoever they put in to represent us, it's Nick Dominello, but he would be in those meetings. Just, so if you want to start out on that, just, that's one way to think about it.
If you, if you want, Peter, if that's going to be a problem for you, I'd be happy to step in, but.
What's that, Gordon?
I said, if, if it's a question mark or a challenge for you, I'll, I'll step in.
Um.
I'm going to ask for your signature, anyway.
Okay. You can do it.
Thanks, Peter.
I also, I don't mind.
Oh, you want to sit on, okay, great. We'll make that, Dan, okay.
So is that the three of you, or the two of you?
No, two.
Okay.
Always just two.
Yep, just wanted to make sure.
So it's Dan and Mrs. Fiddler.
And no, Dan and Ellen. Okay. Bargaining Subcommittee for Assistant Principals Contract, where do we stand with that? Is that, I know there's a number that you just went through, so is that still ahead of us?
They're, just met, we're working with it. Though, I was going to bring it up today when I get to the superintendence thing, is that we'd like to have a meeting with the, with the, with the subcommittees next week.
Okay.
Very small.
I'll be on this one as well. Obviously, we lost somebody.
Yeah.
If Becky stays on, then I'll, I'll join.
Okay, so, that'll be Peter and Becky.
Yep.
You're going to stay on that one?
I'll stay on that one.
Okay. Let's see, Bargaining Subcommittee for Non-Certified Contract, where do we stand with that?
The ISAs. We, John and I met with them a couple of weeks ago, same thing. We will, and, and the attorneys have been talking throughout this. There's not a lot of, we've done a lot of language over the years, so there's not a lot of language, and a lot of the finances were done so that we could get through this budget and to work out in front, so we sort of knew, and they worked with us very well, so we're just getting the language done on, on most of those. Jay Phelan is part of that, working on some of the language for some of the, our ASD rooms, therapeutic rooms, and those, those types of language changes.
And the non-certified, could that, also, that includes the secretaries and, like, custodians and stuff?
Nick and David just got done with the secretary. I mean, all of this has been moving along during the budget, as we move along, trying to make sure that we stay within the numbers that we discussed.
As I learn the language, can you tell me ISA?
Instructional Support Assistant?
Thank you.
And just to be clear, so for instance, this is the year that, in this case, we're talking about non-certified contract. When that is complete, for instance, next year, do we even need that, to Becky's point, do we even need that subcommittee? So next year, we could table it.
You can table it, but you would want to have it there in case an MOU needed to come up, right?
Oh, okay.
A memorandum of agreement.
Yep.
So, like, during.
Oh, sorry.
During these, during, any types of conversations that we've gone in with the union, Mrs. Foster's been on, as the former chair was on with Mr. Dominello, so like, Nick would say, these are things that we talked, how do you guys like this? These are, this is the red line edits, this is the red line version, here we are. And then, like, we would bring back to you, and really, what the school committee would do, and really would want to see, we got to follow policy anyways, but what you wanted to see is the financial packages as we move forward.
Okay, all right.
Are all of these new subcommittees meant to start now, or in August? Because you had mentioned.
The new, the new fiscal year, this is for next year's fiscal year, or the current, the one that starts July?
Well, you're in the school committee tonight.
The least subcommittee.
That's what I was asking.
You're in the school committee tonight.
For example, right, so the policy subcommittee will start, but.
No, no, I meant the ISA's contract.
Oh, oh.
Scheduled to start July 1.
The contracts begin July 1st, for the four contracts that are up right now.
Okay.
The ISAs, the Administrative Assistants, the Assistant Principals, and Custodians, we hope, will start July 1st, 2024, and go out three years.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, so.
Okay.
And they'll go to June 30th, 2027.
Great. Anyone have an interest in that subcommittee?
Can I ask another question? Sorry. So anybody that's joining that subcommittee now is going to just have the next couple of meetings, and then that's it, to be participating in it? Am I understanding that right? Because the contracts are signed in July?
They'll be signed in a couple, they'll be signed over the next couple of weeks before your last school committee meeting, and you'll get a chance to look at them. There really wasn't a, we did a lot of language change in the last, the last version, and the Assistant Principals, Administrative Assistants, and ISAs have been extremely fluid and moved very quickly. We're working with the Teamsters and the Custodians right now. The Teamsters have taken over our custodial body, so we don't have them, but that'll probably go a little bit longer. And we have a meeting on the books, I believe, for next week, or the following week, with the Teamsters.
Okay. Want to, in, the former chair would have recognized your questions, and then assigned you a role. I'm, I'm not going to follow her pattern, but it's an opportunity for you. You want to be on this one, just to kind of get your feet wet?
Sure.
Like that? Okay, nice. See, I did it much better than Lauren.
Well, because my question was going to be, shouldn't somebody that's already been on it, but it looks like that's not an option, so.
Either one is, is available. And anyone else want to be on that one?
I can do it.
You'll do it, Becky?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this bargaining or the?
This is the non-certified.
Non-certified, okay.
So.
Trying to keep up.
The most popular one, Budget Subcommittee. Becky, did you say you wanted to stay on that one?
I'd happily stay on that one. I, not to do this to you, I feel super strongly that the chair should be on it, just because of the amount of conversations that happen. So if there are other people that want those experiences, I would step back in order for you to be able to still be there. If that's something, or if you want, didn't want to, I suppose, as a vice chair, I could. I just feel like one of us needs to be.
I agree, okay.
As present as was last year.
Did I ask Becky for her opinion?
I offer.
That's okay, Becky. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll be happy to be on it. I thought it makes sense for Dan to be on it. He's got the most experience. If you don't mind, I don't want to bog.
No, 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 I don't mind.
Say no. And were you about to jump up and down?
No.
Do you want, I've done it for two years. I enjoy it, but I, but also happy to.
I certainly don't want to steal your enjoyment.
It wouldn't be stealing it.
Your enjoyment.
If you want a chance for that, I've done it for two years.
I'm looking at how many I've already said yes to.
Yeah. Well, the Assistant Principal's going to be a slow dead one.
Was I on that one?
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
Policy.
Is there another one that you want to be on?
Oh, I'll find.
I won't kill you with a promise, you want?
I'll, I'll take it if you don't.
Go ahead, have a shot.
So what just?
I mean, in a good way, yeah.
I'll jump in.
Yeah, I think everybody should have an experience to.
What just happened?
Be part of that. It's Peter Furia took it.
So Peter, okay.
Did you take it under duress?
I took, I thought.
Anytime you want to offer your opinion, Becky, I'm open to it.
Yes.
No, I'm happy for you to do it.
That's my point.
Voting Delegate to the Annual Conference. I know I'm planning.
To continue that?
To go, but if somebody else wants to go, I mean, obviously, more than one of us can go, just somebody is the voting delegate.
When does that normally take place?
Usually the first week in November.
Or right around Veterans Day.
Yeah.
I can, I usually go to the.
It's usually a couple of days.
Or make it to the, the delegate thing.
Like, for instance.
It's down in Hyannis.
Yeah, it's in Hyannis. Usually the first day or second. This year, they did it a little bit different. You can, you'll know, if you were going to be the voting delegate, you'd know when they're going to be taking those votes.
Right.
And you could be there just for that, if you wanted, or you could be there for longer, if you wanted.
And like, two meetings before we go, well, this is like a little, you know, is we get the resolutions, so what you go, so the school committee, two meetings before we talk about the resolutions, and either vote on that meeting or the next meeting, but they have to be voted on and decided, so that the delegate can bring them to the conference and vote as, vote our wishes.
Yeah. So if the majority votes yea on a particular resolution, that would be your first vote, but a lot of times, things get amended, and you have our authority to vote however you think is the right way.
Okay.
So, you want, you, we can give you the dates, if, if that ends up to be a conflict.
Well, what if there was a conflict on the date, right?
Yeah, then I'll, I'll be happy to step in. So I'll put your name down, but I'll be your backup.
Sure.
Okay. I know at some point in time, we have to let MASC know, so.
Okay.
Okay. You got that one, Mike?
Mr. Furia?
Yep.
McKinnon staying on it, though? Are you just not staying on it?
I'll be going, so, you know, I could step in, but we'd have to let MASC know, because only a delegate, a voting delegate can sit in a certain section, or whatever.
Okay, yep.
Update to the educational philosophy of the district. Now, I know we did that this year, Gina, so is that sort of just a kind of a, just a placeholder now? I mean.
So if the committee ever decides, I think you have to vote on the, the philosophy every year. So if the committee decides they want to update it, then.
Then those people would step in?
Right.
Okay.
But this was the first time it had been updated in a number of years, so.
In a while. Yep, okay. Anyone like to step up on that? How about that one, Amy?
Sure.
I knew you didn't ask any questions. I was anticipating you to ask a question. Amy, anyone else? I know Becky, you were on it?
Mm-hmm.
What do you?
Happy to stay on it.
Okay. And I was on it. I'm happy to stay on it for the time being, unless somebody else feels strongly about it? No? Okay. And Subcommittee for Superintendent Evaluation Process. Right now, that's myself, Mr. Furia, and Mrs. Pennington. I'll say yee.
I would stay on it.
Stay on it?
Whereas I picked up a couple. If anybody else was interested in taking that on, I don't know if there is.
Okay.
I would do it.
Good, okay.
Becky's saying she'll step in.
So you're going to switch with, you'll take Peter's place?
Sure.
Okay. And anyone else want to be on it? Otherwise, I'll take that role. Seeing no swell of, okay, I'll take it. School Committee Representative to Capital Needs Planning Committee. Now, I've done that for a number of years. If somebody else wants to do that, great, so.
I think it should be Peter or Dan.
Oh, another opinion. You just opened the floodgates for people's opinions, Becky.
Voices should be heard.
That's true, that's true. I agree.
Capital doesn't take that much time. I can do it.
I'll do it along with them.
Okay.
I don't think, we just have one rep, though.
Should we keep it as one?
You can share it.
Typically, it's just one, because you have, you can, you vote, so they probably don't want to be overloaded with school committee vote.
And then, because in capital needs, they, we have to let, somebody needs to let the selectmen's office, no, Select Board's Office, because don't they have to go down there? And I don't, I've never been, you know?
Is the school committee rep a voting member of Capital?
Has been, as long as I've been on it, yeah.
You, you've been on it for a while. Did you ever have to go get, like?
I don't recall, no.
Okay. As secretary of the committee, I will find out.
Okay, hey, nicely done.
I think that, I think that some, I think we do, so I'll just double check.
Okay.
If I do everything correctly.
And Standing Committee for School Committee Goals. That's, right now, it's Peter and Ellen. Mrs. Foster's not there anymore, so.
I'd stay on it.
You'll stay?
Yeah, I think, coming up soon, I think this year is, might be the year we have to review to see if we're going to revise them or not, or what.
Yes. Peter, how do you feel?
With my hands, generally, but.
Good.
I'm just curious, it's hard to gauge what else to volunteer for without knowing, like, what the time commitment is? So, something like that, does it, does anybody have a feel of what the commitment is?
Well, it depends. So we could meet once, and then the people on this committee could decide that they're fine, and then we could come back, and then we bring it to the whole committee, and then the whole committee looks at it and says, sure, they're fine, or we could decide we want to revamp them, and then it might take a meeting or two, or three, and then we might come, or we, we could revise it, come back to the whole committee, and they say, no, we don't like it, and we go back to the drawing board. So it all depends.
Well, and the other piece of it is that when a subcommittee has to meet, it's a, it's a collaborative effort. Hey, are you available Tuesday night or Thursday night? And, you know, between those members, you figure, oh, no, it's best for me to meet 5:30 on Thursday, or whatever, and if everyone else can be, that's when you do it. And I would say, having been on that committee, I don't think there's any particularly elongated[1710.06] And I would say, having been on that committee, um, I don't think there's any particularly elongated one meeting. I, I think, you know, probably an hour or so.
Yeah.
Talk about things, if this thing can't be resolved, then it's, okay, let, when we come back, get together again, let's set another meeting date and maybe we can finalize that.
And all the Subcommittee meetings are as needed, it's not a set schedule like...
Right.
All right, I'll do that one, that's fine.
Okay. Great, thank you. So that one's, uh, Peter, Amy and Ellen. You got that Mike? Okay. And, Community Coalition for Change. Oh, I told Mr. Walker I'd help him with that, so I'll, I'll be happy to do that. I don't know when, is there a typical meeting schedule for that?
We, uh, meet usually at every other Tuesday.
Really? Every other Tuesday? How much change do you need?
Yeah, the first Tuesday of the month, usually. We'll meet before this meeting.
Before this meeting.
Okay.
I feel like it's every other Tuesday. Oh, that's right. Oh, you know what, we had to postpone one, so...
Okay.
So we got back.
So, uh, I would, I would take that unless...
And it's usually at 3:30.
Okay.
So that just means if you have a budget Subcommittee on the same day, you have to pick one.
Okay. So I'll step in on that one unless, again...
Did you ever know on the same day?
Oh, okay.
Even if still, we could work around the schedule.
Okay.
Um, Gordon, before you move on from it, the, um, I don't know if this is the place for it. The, um, it seems like it's the place on the list for the people or the person who is on the Central School Building Committee.
Oh, you know what, that's a, that's a good one because that's going to be ongoing for a few years. That isn't just one and done, so...
So I, I don't know if it belongs here. It's, it's not a Subcommittee obviously, but it's certainly along the lines of representative, which is on the list.
It's kind of like the School Committee Rep to the Capital.
Yes, so it feels like it belongs here.
So I don't know, we'll talk about that Mike, maybe we'll, we'll add that in.
Do you want to add it now, or do you want to think about it?
Well, right now, as it currently stands, it's Becky, Dan and myself. Now that Dan's on the committee, he, you know, it was just the two of us, now it's the three of us.
So I was on for School Committee, Dan was on for Finance.
For Community.
Community, and Gordon was on for Capital, right? Or something like that? Or were we both on for School Committee?
I think, yeah, I kind of added after the fact, I think it was School Committee.
Right, right. We have plenty of representation, but, um, it's probably should be clear here.
Well, you could probably still stay on as Community, I mean...
Okay, so we would keep that the same, right now? So that would be Becky, Dan...
Well, if Dan was on as, if he was on not as a FinCom and as a Community, then you don't have to count him here. You don't have to count him as a School Committee rep.
Well, I do now because he's here on our committee.
No, but if he's, he's on that committee as Community, as like part of the community.
Oh, I see what you mean. I don't know, let's ask the Chairperson.
So I'll check with the MSBA to see if now that Dan is a member of the School Committee, if we should change his title on Building Committee.
And those of you who don't know, the MSBA has lots of rules. Lots of rules, so... No doubt they'll have a ruling on that. Okay. I think that's it for right now, unless there's anything else. And I, I didn't have a chance to go, if we go through it and, I don't want to be overburdened on either one of you, so if we take a look at this. If there's something we have to revise, we'll revise it. I don't, I want you to feel like you're, um, you know, overly tapped.
I'm sorry Gordon, I have one more.
Yes.
We had said that Scott was the Subcommittee to DEI. We kind of voted that one time in the middle of the year.
Coalition for Change, no?
I don't think that's the same, unless it's blended.
I think he, I think they...
I think it was blended.
I think it was blended.
Okay.
So...
So DEI, so we're attaching DEI to EBC?
Yeah, he was this Community, he, that's what I wrote, so I looked back on my, um, the notes from my, whatever the previous meeting was, and I wrote, um, a liaison to Community Coalition for Change. I took it right from my, right from this list from my last year's notes.
No, I totally get that. I'm saying that, that he, he was added specifically about DEI and Community Coalition for Change is not, even though they might be in favor, that's not the same exact thing. So I'm asking if we've blended them, or if it's separate.
Seems like it should be separate.
It should be, EBCC, it should not, the Coalition should not be on here.
Be that, no, it should be DEI.
Diversity Equity Inclusion on here. EBCC is a, they already have their own council or forum for their meetings, they should be DEI.
I think that needs...
So we'll change, change that Mike, we'll change that to...
The Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee.
Yeah. So it was just Scott, I don't know if at some point, I get it, you're saying we should have that conversation later, but I just wanted it on the radar.
Okay, and I don't know what their, how am I going to get in line with them if that's going to be me? Do they have a, a regular scheduled meeting?
Yeah, but it's, they're not, they're not...
They're not a Subcommittee under...
They're not a Subcommittee of your School Committee. The School Committee is, we, we want diversity, equity and inclusion throughout our community. That's what they're, I mean, obviously, we want that at the District. Ours is, what are we doing about our hiring practices with DEI? What are we doing in schools and our policies? Are our policies, um, inclusive? Do they provide equity across the board? Is there diversity inside the policy of the School Committee? The EBCC is there to support the community and to bring issues to their forum so that we can hear it and then have conversation.
So, not a Subcommittee, what would we call it? Or shouldn't be on this list at all?
I think you're saying create a new committee for DEI, correct? It's called goals.
The committee is, the committee should be listed as Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
The Committee, the former Committee created, and the EBCA's to, uh, December, January, the creation as the Committee. It was created by Mr. Walker.
Yep. Right.
So the Committee happened, the Standing Committee happened, but this is the same, created.
Okay. I think it was just printed, I think it was just written wrong, so it is DEI Committee.
Okay, super. Got it. Okay. I think we're done with that, any other? Excellent. Standing Committees.
Would you like me to make a motion on this list of Subcommittee's and Standing Committees?
I'm sorry, I hear the beginning of it.
Make a motion to, to move, to accept this list as we've just discussed?
Sure, let's do that. Yes.
Uh, I move that we accept the list that we just all discussed and agreed upon and volunteered for. Uh, of the Standing and Subcommittees.
Okay.
Second.
Second, right. Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, great. Thank you, thanks Ellen. The Adoption of East Bridgewater School Committee Mission Statement. Now, um, I know that's part of our packet, if I can pull it up here. There it is. And I think the last time it was updated was 2016. And whether we want to keep it the way it is, or do we think it should be updated? Thoughts, suggestions?
I think it should be updated. Does it correlate to, does any, does...
Bless you.
Excuse me. I don't know if the, um, the, what's that Subcommittee called? Uh, the Education, that, the one, Subcommittee to Update Educational Philosophy of the District. Does that, the educational philosophy correspond with the mission statement? Or was that not looked at?
I remember we looked at it, I remember we took, we, I remember it being part of a conversation when we were looking at it.
Yeah, but we didn't act on it.
But we were mostly focused on the vision of the graduate.
Yep.
When we were working with creating the educational philosophy. Um, I remember certainly we noted the mission statement. I don't think it was centered around it though.
Okay. From your office point of view, Liz, anything you think should be updated in that?
No, I think that if, if Mrs. Berry wants to take it back and take a look at it, then it should be taken, take a look at it.
Okay. Anyone else want to work with Amy on, on this? To look at revising it possibly?
I can do that with Amy.
You'll do that?
I'll do that with Amy, thanks.
So we won't vote on it, we'll table this, uh, until next, I don't know if you can look at it between now and next meeting, or at least give us your thoughts anyway.
Sure.
Uh, just a question for process, if I did and I developed something to share, would I share it at the next meeting or prior to the next meeting?
You would meet with Becky and you two would have a Subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
And you would let Mike know about that Subcommittee and then we would post it and then you could meet and then you would go for it.
Perfect, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll, um, we'll table that. And Adoption of the Educational Philosophy of East Bridgewater. I could keep my papers straight. Um, let's see. It's page two here. The Educational Philosophy, I know I saw it in here Mike, right?
Yeah, it's right.
Oh, there it is, I got it, I got it. Okay. I know we just revised this last year. So I would, I would say it would stand and I would vote for it. Anyone else feel strongly?
Did you just make a motion?
I was, sure, I'll make a motion, that way we can get through it. I make a motion that we accept it.
I mean, second, I'm seconding because you motioned.
Okay, any discussion?
I think it was just revised and I think it's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work on it.
Okay. All right, so, okay, we'll take a vote? All in favor? Aye? Okay. Thank you. If I can keep my papers straight, great. Okay. Now, Lilia, this will be the longest meeting of your life. What update do you have for us, Lilia?
Um, so I think across all three buildings, everyone's eager to reach the last day of school. Um, in particular, the senior class. Um, last day of classes for us is Friday, so we're very excited. Um, and then graduation is next Friday. So that'll happen at, um, the ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM and it will happen rain or shine. Um, each graduate, if it was to be inside, will get four tickets and they will be given out at, um, graduation rehearsal next week. Senior Award Night and Scholarship Night is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And then Senior Banquet is Thursday at the Commercial Club, also at 6:00 PM. Most of the athletic teams are approaching the last couple weeks of their season. Um, a lot of them are looking to move on to the postseason, so that's very exciting. Let's see, there's a couple field trips happening this week at the high school. Um, tomorrow, um, in particular, is the Women in Sports Conference, so, um, the captains of the girls lacrosse, lacrosse team will be going, as well as coach, so I'm excited for that. At the middle school, there's a lot of things happening. I know the talent show was a big hit last year, so I think they're excited to do that again. Um, that's on May 30th, and then the spring concert is May 28th. Um, some other events that are happening is the Fun Run, Career Fairs, um, sixth grade graduation is a big one as well, on June 12th. And, um, Field Day across the grade. So I think they all are super excited about that. I know there's a lot of things happening at the Central School as well. And the transitions between each building, I think, are something that, like Step Up Day and all that stuff, that kids are looking forward to and I'm excited to be a part of that. I think overall this year, especially at the high school, has been different, um, with the principals switch over and there's been a lot of new updates. I know like the phones and all this stuff has been different, so I think a lot of the students are ready to get a break for the summer, but excited to get used to them and transition to the next year. Um, I just want to finish by thanking everyone on the committee for your support and guidance, um, as I served on the committee. And, um, I'm excited to come back and visit and stuff. And I'm excited for Ainzie Raffino to be taking over. Um, she was hoping to be here tonight, but she did write a letter, so I will read that. She said, "Dear EBJSHS School Committee Members, my name is Ainzie Raffino and I'm a current sophomore at EBJSHS. Next year, I'll be representing the student body as the student representative for the School Committee. I'm very excited for this opportunity and look for, look forward to meeting you all in person. I'm currently at a tech rehearsal for a drama show I am starring in this weekend at the Capitoni School of Performing Arts. Thank you Superintendent Lego, Dr. Williams, Principal Silva and Lilia Fandis for this opportunity. I cannot wait to get started next year. Sincerely, Ainzie Raffino." So, she's a very, um, good student and I know she's very involved and I know she's very excited to start, so...
Great, thank you Lilia.
Thank you.
And remind me, what school are you headed to?
UConn.
Oh, very good. I know a couple of people there, probably going to love it.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
So...
Excellent. All right, don't forget about us, you can come back and tell us what college life is like. Some of us might have forgotten. Thank you, Lilia.
So Lilia, before you go, I just wanted to say a few things, um, prior to you leaving Exeter, going to the UConn Huskies. Uh, we wish you the best of luck to make the cheer team, uh, that you told me that you tried out this weekend. And I want you to tell us if you get a call this week and let us know how, what happens. I think all of us find you to be an articulate, talented, bright young woman, who has a promising future. We wish you the best at UConn. We hope that you do make the Husky Cheer Squad and we hope that you come back to see us, as often, because we will keep the light on for you as always. Also, I wanted to present you with the Certificate of Academic Excellence. Lilia Anne Fragundes, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence. Witness whereof the seal, the association and the signature of the Superintendent of Schools are hereunto affixed. Congratulations, we wish you the best of luck at UConn.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you've done for our school. Oh wait. So you have graduation on May, uh, Lilia just talked about it, next Friday night, 6:00 PM. Gordon, uh, now that you are the Chair, Mr. Silva, uh, we'd like to let him know, Dr. Williams would like to let him know in the morning that you will be there and to welcome, uh, the community to graduation and to open up ceremonies.
Yes, if anything changes, I will call you, Gina, I'll know that as soon as I...
The program's going to print tomorrow.
No, I'm, not when I get home. I will, I will, they'll take a vote in my house.
Okay.
I'm going to go quick through this list because I, I get it. Um, and Lilia, thank you, if you, if, I know you've got a lot of things to do and I know that it's last week of school and you guys are all out.
Thanks again, Lilia.
Thanks, Lilia.
Don't they play games on this week, right? Um, in your packet is the, our, the Updated Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act, I, we've given you an overview, we've gone through this before, but it is, um, it's the, it's the funding formula, it's, it's the updated funding formula and they hope that it makes everyone equal across the Commonwealth. And what it is, is for our, under, um, our populations in ELL, in Special Education, um, and those students, um, in poverty. And we find, we found, uh, years ago that a lot of the money from Chapter 70 would go towards the urbans and to schools that are, are Title One, mostly nine, over 95% Title One. Where they were getting federally and state funds. And then sc, smaller schools like us in East Bridgewater, our funding formula just didn't fit. So the Student Opportunity Act, what it is supposed to do, is supposed to help us increase and get more money for the students that are most need. ELL population, uh, special needs population, uh, students in poverty. Uh, this helps us get our grants, this helps us get increased money. Jay Fallon, myself, um, Gina, John Shay, we took our last Student Opportunity Act, we went through it, I spoke to Desi. It's in your packet and what it is, is we talk about how many students, our population has increased in ELL, our population in special needs. Where, where's that population going? How are they doing in their classrooms and what are the needs? As you saw in the budget this year, the needs are increasing and we need more financial support to support the students that we have here in the District. So, um, the Student Opportunity Act, um, I can tell you that the, the grant program is, is difficult to work on, the Desi website, but we've got everything in, we've uploaded. It's moving forward and so I brought it to your attention just so you have it. And it resembles, it resembles a lot of what we did the last time, we just added our new numbers. I think, John, what was it, about 40,000 the last time we got? And we put in about 1.1 million. So it doesn't, it doesn't always add up, but they're saying that this is the year that we should start seeing the Student Opportunity Act kick in to help the Chapter 70 funding for the state. And I, you know, whether that works, whether it doesn't work, and whether it levels the playing field, well, that's something for us to see. But I think they took a, I, I think the business administrators, a few superintendents, um, across the Commonwealth got together about five or six years ago and sat down and said, why is the funding formula working for some and not working for others? And so they got together and said, okay, let's figure out a way we can make this equal and try to come up with some type of plan. It's a lot of work and then you come in and you say you don't get a lot of money, but I think there's going to be a time where the latter comes and starts to meet. So we're hoping, they say in the next couple of years. So hopefully we see that.
So, excuse me, so the way this is written, this is for fiscal year that we're in now, not 2025? Or, no, this is fiscal year 25? I always get confused since the year starts 23 and goes to 24. So this is for the new budget coming up?
Yes. And you, you write it, this is what, this is their template that they send out. Yes. And you, you write it, this is what, this is their template that they send out. So we do it, and then you'll see, it'll get updated. So I'm saying, gems is a little bit tough, but you do have the updated version.
And do we have to sign this or vote on it?
I had to bring it to school committee. I can have it, you can vote on it. To vote on it, if I can have a-
It says, "Date of school committee vote."
Yeah, I think it's today.
I move that we accept the Student Opportunity Act plan. Thank you for all your hard work on it, whoever worked on it. Thank you.
I think you've seen it, and it's the, it's your budget, really. That's what it really is. And it puts it in those three categories that were our most challenging.
All right, so moved by Ellen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Timelines? So you submit this? I just don't understand the timelines.
There's no timeline. So you, we submit it.
Yep.
Desi looks at it.
Okay.
And we say, "We need 1.75 million dollars more to do the things that we need to do for these students." Last year, I think we got 42,000 dollars.
Okay. And you came up with that number with Mr. Shea?
Yeah. So what happened, what happens is, is that the funding formula that is being used at this time-
I just set up.
-is just not, it's not equitable across the Commonwealth. So what we're trying to do with the Student Opportunity Act is make it equitable across the Commonwealth, whether you have 500 students in your district or 25,000 students in your district, whether you are a Title One, 100% free and reduced lunch, or you get zero free and reduced lunch. They're trying to make it equitable across, and that's really what it is. It's just trying to just level the playing field for everybody.
Did it ask you for any kind of demographic information?
We send everything.
You do?
This is, we did this three years ago, and we did the updated amended version, then we do another one, and we're just amending as we're going.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Thank you.
Dr. Williams, Central School Board, any update?
Oh, sure. In your packet is the most recent press release that we sent out, completing the securing of the Operations Project Manager. We had a selection subcommittee made up of members of our building committee. There were six voting members, along with myself and Mrs. Byrne, sat in on the interviews, but we're not voting members. It was unanimous amongst the selection committee to recommend Leftfield Project Management as our OPM for the feasibility study. All of the paperwork was submitted to the MSBA, including what we used for criteria when looking at the packets they submitted, what we used for selection criteria when we interviewed, narratives that we came up with, with each group, and why they got the rating that they got, and how we came to Leftfield being the top firm for us to recommend. So June 3rd, the MSBA will vote to approve of the Operations Project Manager Leftfield that we recommended. An agreement will be signed, and then from there, we sort of start over again looking for designer selections. So we need a designer architect who will then work with us and the OPM to begin the feasibility study. So, just a couple of highlights of why Leftfield stood out from the other groups, and certainly Mr. McKinnon was on the selection committee, so he can share his thoughts too. But, but two things that stood out. One of the senior members of Leftfield worked for the MSBA for a number of years, so definitely had a lot of good insight as to what the MSBA is looking for when we partner on a project. And one of the things that stood out to myself and Mrs. Byrne is they have a former superintendent that's part of the project team as well, and onsite during any of the work that's done, so that they're making sure educational programming is not disruptive during any of, whether it's a renovation, addition, new build. So that was really important for us as well, knowing that building administration's not gonna have to be out there on a daily basis, making sure students' learning is not impacted or interrupted. One last thing I think that stood out as well is communities that have used Leftfield, we noticed they have repetitively used them. So they've used them for multiple projects, not just one. So to us, that meant certainly they had a great experience and continue to use them. Is there anything else, Gordon?
No, I think we all agreed that any one of, we brought it down to five finalists, any one of them, they have a lot of experience. Any one of them could handle the project, no doubt. What it came down to is, what kind of connection do we feel? Obviously, you have to work closely with your project manager, and they really presented very well, I thought. They were very engaged, very personable, and they had their experts lined up, such as the superintendent, such as somebody who worked, worked for MSBA for 12 years. Very engaging. And I was surprised, we didn't know it when we finally took the vote at the end. Everyone around the room, and everyone voted for them. So it was, as Gina said, it was unanimous vote, but it was, we came to that without any discussion ahead of time. We just listened to all the different presentations. We all had the same exact impression. So I thought, I thought that was a good sign. Now we, we wait. God help us if MSBA doesn't accept our, our, our choice. But, and I think one of the other things, we asked a number of them, you know, how did they see this? Because I don't know whether it's, as Gina said, whether it's gonna be a renovation, an addition, a brand-new building. No one knows yet. That's what the feasibility study's gonna do. But all of them, I think, pretty much were in agreement that there's not gonna be a shovel in the ground for, was it like, three years, four years?
Yeah, they said six years from beginning to end, probably from the start of the project to the end.
So it's not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. It's gonna, it's obviously a huge project, and a lot goes into it, and so it's good to know.
Any questions anyone has about the committee, or? We'll keep you updated.
So a couple of questions came up at the last school committee meeting about the DEI audit. We met with EBCC last week. I spoke to the team, the group, the coalition. We'll bring forward some names and start talking about doing a survey and moving forward. I think that the, that one of the things that we need to get in place, whether we do a July or August meeting, is how much money that you would like to earmark for a DEI audit for the district. Is it 30,000? Is it 90 million? You decide. You know, pick out, Liz, we, you know, it's, it's, we want it to be in between 25,000 and 55,000. And I brought some, some to you, and I've showed you some that, some start at 25,000 and some have gone up to 135,000. So the EBCC team spoke, we spoke to them last week and talked about, you know, what we want to see this audit give back to the district for us to move forward, and for the, for the inequities that we do have, and for the strengths that we have, and figure out where we're at, and then move the district forward. And that's really where we were at, and so I'll pull some more of those together. And then, as John would always say, is that, you know, you have to go out for bid, but we have to get what we want from the audit, get that together, put it together, and then we'll go out from there, and you'll be part of that process throughout. So the DEI team, maybe the EBCC team meets together, and then we'll move that forward. So that's-
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but where, where are we in the, in the sort of timeline from other districts that you talk about, talk to? You know, where, where are they in this process?
So when we came, when we came out of COVID, everybody went, "We need to do an equity audit." And so a lot of, a lot of districts jumped right in. And then some districts, then Desi got involved with the Ready Program, some other programs, to say, "Okay, this is what, this is, we've got some teams and some companies that will work with us and help you do these audits." Then it was hire a DEI officer, a, someone in that personnel that can watch your district or oversee DEI. What I've seen, Gina, if you want to jump in, and what we've both seen, is that people did audits, people got personnel in DEI official positions, and now we're getting, now we're sort of down the line, and it's not faded away, but it's not as, it, it should just be part of who we are. We should just always be looking at, are we, you know, do we have a diverse population? How are our hiring policies? What do our policies look like? Are they friendly enough? What's our website looking at? And that has come, that's, without the audit, we have seen that. Where are we in retrospect? I think we're with every, I would, we're with many districts. Randolph, what, five miles away from us, six miles away, they're very different looking than we are. They went right in, they got an audit, they brought someone in. I spoke to Superintendent Stovall, she told me about the audit, she told me who she brought in. It was one of the people that I would bring forward. They implemented many of the things that they saw, and they're gonna just keep moving forward. There are other communities like us that are still trying to get into the, find the audit. First of all, the audits are expensive, as, they should be done, and money should be allocated, but if you look around, budgets are very tight. And so I think sometimes you say, "Do we do, do we do an equity audit, or do we keep the ELL teacher that we have in the classroom?" And I think that's what people are seeing right now. I don't like to talk about other districts, but a district that's close by, their override failed the other night. It's been going on for months. When that fails, you know, that superintendent needs, and, and his or her team really need to think, what's the most important thing we have to do right now? We've gotta have people in place for kids, and whoever those people are, we've gotta have them in place. So people real, I think that's where people are when they're looking at the DEI audit, is, is having someone in place, like a DEI person, someone to oversee DEI of the district, or to do an audit and to make it homegrown, and to make it us, and to make us the, the shepherds of it, that we look at it and say, "What are we doing?" and not just have one person in place. I mean, I've heard, I've heard two different sides. I've, I've seen some districts have a person in place, and then you say, "What does that person do during the day? Where are they during the day? Who are they servicing during the day? You know, what are some of their things that they're doing during the day?" Because that's what people look at. And then, and then you hear, "Well, they do this, or they go to classrooms, or they're teaching this, or they're, you know, all over the district." Or they help in, in the conversation in classrooms. And then I've heard that we don't have. And then, and then you hear, "We put our money towards training the trainer model."
Right.
That we take on, you know, have someone come in, have a company work with us on an audit, and then we take on that role and say, "What do we need to do in the classroom? What do we need to do as administrators? What do we need to do as a community?" So, you know, if that captures?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not like we've been at a standstill as a district. We've noticed most profoundly the issues that we've dealt with over the few years has been microaggressions, so comments that are being said between students, among students, even faculty to faculty, and the piece that staff have felt most uncomfortable about is, "How do I interrupt that? How do I interrupt when, you know, there's a racial slur that I overhear, or there's a microaggression that's said by a staff member?" And being really uncomfortable about how to interrupt that without creating more of a situation. So we have about nine members from across the district, approximately three teachers in every building, who we've invested in training over the course of this year. So we talked about Dr. Police Warnum. So Dr. Warnum has done a few professional developments with the entire staff, but she's working specifically with this group of individuals, which we call our task force. And she trains them on a monthly basis, and then during professional development time, these nine staff members do the training in the buildings for the staff. We call it facilitating, 'cause they're a little cautious about not saying that they're trainers, still learning themselves. And then Dr. Warnum meets with the administrative team on a bimonthly basis, just to say, "This is the training that I did for the task force. This is how the administration can support that." Basically, making sure we make time for this type of training to happen, making sure we're looking at our policies, and making sure that we're letting staff know that this is important, and the work that we're doing, as the superintendent said, is not the responsibility of one person coming in the district to, you know, keep an eye out and making sure everybody's doing what they're doing, but everybody taking ownership for it. So that's, you know, a major initiative that we've been doing. Also, we talked a lot about universal design for learning, and how it's challenging for all students to access learning if it's taught one way for all students. So breaking down those barriers and making sure that we're catering to the learning styles of all students. So that's certainly bringing equity into the classroom as well, as well as the school councils have working, are working on their handbooks, and looking at policies in the handbooks. Dr. Warnum's helping them with that as well, making sure that there's no bias implicitly in our handbook policies for students. So, again, I don't, without, absent of the audit, or absent of having a DEI coordinator in the district, the district, I feel, has still taken responsibility for what we need to do to improve the inclusivity of the district. I think where we fall short maybe is with areas that we're not sure how to address. One basically is about hiring more diverse staff. You know, we've really struggled with that, knowing that students learn best when they see themselves reflected in the adults that they see on a daily basis. So our student population is about 10%. Of our students are a minority. Certainly, our teaching staff is not as diverse as that, so certainly trying to increase that. Hiring practices, retaining staff, and, and just bringing more awareness within the district. So, like I said, we're pedaling the bike, but certainly with an audit, we can have more specific information about certain aspects of the district, whether it's human resources side, whether it's the educational side, professional development. There's certainly a slew of things that an audit could cover. As a district, we would just have to prioritize what we want those to be, and go from there.
Thank you. And so what action do you need from us? You need us to provide that direction of, okay, we're gonna, we think?
I think, I think in a couple, I would think by August, if over the summer, I know that Mass is still doing that, so when we're, when we're away at our retreat, we'll be able to see and talk to other districts that have done audits, and then you get to meet some of the companies that are at our retreat, you talk to them, and then we can come back and say, "We're, we're looking between 25 and 60,000 dollars." And that would be something that the school committee would have to say, "Stay within this range, and you're going to take it out of this fund."
So based on that, we would have an action item in September, let's say, based on that kind of-
Or August.
August or September?
August or September. So that we, I mean, if we're gonna engage with a company, we're gonna wanna get them, get them in here. It takes, there are, I, there's, there's, one company takes three months because they're a one, one-person show, and they come in, and they just settle into your district, and they just stay for three months. And they get, and then they get the report to you within, I think, in six months, the whole, zero to six. So they're in the district for half a year. Other companies have gone from September to June. So we would, that's why I wanna get this going, is-
Okay.
I just wanna let everybody know that Dr. Williams went to Bridgewater State to their job, their career fair two weeks ago, and I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, and we've been there several times, brought back 65, and it was Stone Hill, Bridgewater State.
That's it, those two.
Those two, so about, about 65 resumes came back to the district from young stu, from new graduates to people graduating for maybe the second time with a different type of degree. I went to Plymouth, to the Hotel 1620, last Saturday. Scott Neve from Carver, the superintendent, wrote a grant to have a full day of career fair, for diversity career fair. He advertised in papers, he advertised on social media, he advertised every place. We had two people for the entire day. And I can tell you, there were over 12 superintendents that could hire on the spot there. So, there was, I mean, the grant, he got the grant, he's going to write the grant again. He sent out an email to us saying, "Thank you very much for coming down, and, and thank you." I mean, I was there with Duck, I mean, I was sitting right across from Duxbury, I was sitting across from Whitman Hansen, Easton was there, Nantucket was there. We were there from, you know, 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon, and two people came. Whether it's education field, whether it's any field, I think we're all still trying to get people to come out and be part of the solution, and get back to work, and to come out, and I don't know. I'm hoping that people see public education- I'm hoping that people see public education as a win and come out to be solutionary for kids. So, but we're going to these and you're on a college campus and Bridgewater State's invited Stonehill over and we get 65 applications. I went to a Saturday hoping for an older, maybe more mature population, not mature as an age, that maybe, maybe don't, wouldn't have the opportunity to come up this way or didn't have the opportunity to see any of us. And superintendents were there, ready to sign people on hand and two people. So, and he, he wrote out, we'll try it again. And he'll write the grant again and, and he told Desi and, you know, so we'll go from there. The other question that was asked was the timeline on the track. Someone had brought that up and sent it to me a couple of times. Next week is graduation on Saturday. The field will be shut, sorry, Friday night. The, the track will be shut down on Monday going forward. We hope the best of the best. We would hope to be on the field in September. If there's no rain, if there's no monsoon, if there's no hurricane, if there's no issues as they begin to dig, if they get underneath there, whatever. We hope to be out there in September. If not, we're pushing it back. It could be October 1st. When Bridgewater Rainham did theirs, and they just did an overlay on theirs, they called us the year prior in June or July. Derek Swenson called me and said, can we come over and, and practice before our first game? And I think they used us for the first game on a Saturday morning. My fingers are crossed, we start on time. My fingers are crossed that we have a good dry summer and that we get it laid down and that it's ready to go for September. I know that Pat, the athletic director, Patrick Leonard, has plans of using the backfields, the upperfields and the other community fields that we have. We also have a superfield behind Mitchell School that could start to be worked on right now and start to be looked at and maybe seeded and, and, you know, send, if we had to send other teams down there, other practice. I was down there today looking at it, thinking, what happens if? So that's the timeline. I think everybody is sort of like, knock on wood, it's just a, it's a dry summer to a certain extent.
If I recall, aren't there some contractual obligations by the?
To hold them, yes.
Hold them accountable for finishing audit at a certain point in time?
Yes, but I also believe though that they're, that we know that if you can't.
They have weather.
The weather is the weather. I mean, there's sometimes if they can't put the equipment on the track or put it on that field because it's going to sink, then there's, I mean, they're going to have some leeway. But they did put parameters in there. But we did, I know that Patrick has talked to area schools if, if need be. So open positions, I know that that came up at the last meeting. I have a confidential, you do not have it. Because there's a confidential list right now of resignations that we've had or, and where we're moving. Spanish at the high school we just hired for today.
Dual certified Spanish Portuguese.
I hired Spanish, that's all I know.
What'd you say, dual certified what? Spanish Portuguese.
Portuguese. A joke because there's been, trying to push for it. We need nurses, CNAs, LPNs, RNs. They are right now interviewing on a daily basis as quickly as possible. Adjustment counselor for, another adjustment counselor for the high school. Math teacher for the high school. ELA for the high school. Special education two. Two, two special ed at the high school.
That's your curiosity question. So in the past, the nurses had to have MTELS, they had to pass the MTELS, is that still true?
Yes, they have to be, for us to hire them, they have to be certifiable. So they have to have all the requirements in place. And then we hire them with the understanding that they will take the MTEL. So there's two courses that usually like through BU Shields that we offer for them to take. The district will pay for them to take that and then they'll take the MTEL.
Is that the same for LPNs and CNAs also?
No, just, well, if, if we hire an LPN as a school nurse, then yes. It's if they're a clinic nurse versus if they're a one-to-one for a medically fragile student.
So we have adjustment counselors, kindergarten teacher, two special education, math, English, several ISAs, special education. Hired Spanish dual certified Portuguese teacher today. RNs, LPNs, CNAs. We are holding off on the BCBA that was district-wide that we had. Jay is in contact with a company and, because it's very difficult to find a BCBA. So we want to make sure that all teacher positions are filled and the adjustment counselor positions are filled before he goes into the BCBA. And if we have to consult out, we will. And we've done that before, we did that prior to this year. This is a confidential list. I ask you, please look at it. I ask that you do not share the names on this list. It's just, I'll let you see it. And then if you don't mind, put it back in your mailbox on your way out and then we will discard it. Okay? Because the staff, as you know, they're with me, but I want, I want you to see where we're at. There is no formal list at this time. And the reason why is because it goes so quickly right this second. As we start to hire, people will resign. We just got a resignation this morning. So people are moving, people have gotten married and are moving. People are having children and have decided that I'm going to take time off. So those are, those are that. And then, then Mr. Shea. Any other, any other issues, questions that?
Will we, to hire, and if I missed this in our previous meeting, I apologize, a business teacher for the high school?
Yes.
Oh, that's all?
It was financial literacy and business. That position is still open.
It's still open, okay.
They are, that's what I'm saying. They're hiring and trying to interview why they're trying to close, as, as they're getting close to the end here. So with everything else that is going on, that's what's just slowing them up a little bit. I think they've got a good candidate, they, a good crop of candidates. When I spoke to Mr. Silva about the high school, again, Dr. Williams dropped off several, several resumes and we had several resumes come in. So it's just getting the time to get them in and, and push them through and, and sign them up. So we're hoping that, I'm hoping that, usually we get everybody done by June 30th and then there'll be another swing in August. But yes.
Do you have a question?
All the roles you just mentioned are all publicly posted?
They have been and they continue to, every, every two or three weeks, we update. And we put it on School Spring, we put it on Indeed, and we first start it in-house. So it'll go out. So if you wanted to move, it'd be, it's posted like, I'm an English teacher and I'm dual certified in math and I want to move into math, then I move math. Then I, then I have an English position open. That's why everything, we just keep it up right now. It's on School Spring. They have been posted. We did a January posting on January 1st. Then as they, then as they start to get stale, we let it go. Then we up, we do it again. So every time Amy Stevens handles that, I think she goes in a 30-day window. She gets, takes them off for a couple of weeks and then puts them back up. There are some you won't see because we didn't know we had a resignation this morning. We didn't know we had a resignation last Thursday. So these things are happening. But I, I appreciate you putting this back in because you're going to see some things. Mr. Shea.
Before we do that, can I just, I just, we moved on from the DEI stuff for a second. I think it's just of note, and I know I've probably obnoxiously said it before, that the school committee has voted for that to be a goal for Liz. So since it's been on her goals for two rounds, right? I think in that conversation, when it gets to the conversation about budget, it's just important to remember that this has been something that the committee has prioritized as a goal. So if we, for some reason, feel that shouldn't happen any further, we, we have to be respectful and adjust that there's a goal on the line here, that, that that's part of this process.
Thank you. John, you ready to talk about numbers?
I am ready. Welcome to the two new members of the school committee. What I handed out tonight is a three-page, high-level summary of the status of our current budget. Just to let you, let you know, there's a tremendous amount of information behind these summaries. And I'm happy to meet with the new members as many times as it takes to help you get comfortable and understand the finances of the district. I'll go through the first page right now. The first page is a high-level summary of where we stand with the budget status. It's two lines, non-salary and salary. You can see the budget for the total fiscal year, 24, is $24,782, with non-salary at $4,304,447. Now, as of May 20th, we have expenses of $3,864,000 and we have encumbered $727,574. Encumbrance, encumbrances are items that have not been paid for yet, but are due to be paid. We have total expense expected of $4,592,000. So at this time, we have an available balance of negative $287,596. So a negative balance means we are over budget on the non-salary line. What is not reflected in these numbers is an entry I made this week to transfer $264,596 to the extraordinary relief circuit breaker account. So we are still slightly over budget on non-salary. Salary, we have a budget of $20,478,000. Right now, we've expensed $15,267,000. We have an available balance remaining of $5,210,000. Now, non-salary, we don't encumber. So this, this doesn't really tell you much until you go to the next page. This is something I started this year. It's my attempt to help the school committee get comfortable that, of how we are doing with the salary budget because the first page does not. This is by account, all the different salary accounts. It shows you the latest payroll that was paid. It shows you what has been paid year-to-date. And in column C, I estimate what is remaining to be paid throughout the fiscal year to give you a total estimated salary with the budget by all the different accounts. And it shows the variance, whether the account is over budget or under budget. You can see at the bottom of the page, in total, it appears as so we may have a surplus in salary of $341,518. Now, there are, there are still three payrolls left in the year. We've seen an increase in substitutes being utilized. So I don't expect we will have a $341,000 surplus. But at least at this time, it gives you an idea of how we're doing with the salary budget. Which will cover, should cover, well, will cover any, anything on the non-salary line. Questions on that?
Thank you, John. Anyone have a question?
Did you say, and I missed it, what, what are the reasons for the highlights?
So the highlights are, my first step is to take the last payroll period and multiply that by the number of remaining payrolls. Because usually like high school teacher line, that, that line's pretty consistent through the year. So I can take the last payroll and multiply that by the number of payroll periods left to estimate the remainder of the year. But there are a lot of lines where I can't do that. It just doesn't make sense. Like coaches, coaches get paid quarterly. So I, I can't, I can't take the last payroll period and multiply that by the remaining payrolls because the last payroll period would be zero. So I actually have detail behind the, the coaches, the substitutes, substitute custodian, the lead teachers, they get paid at the end of the year. So I, there's no way to calculate the remaining salary, so I need to do it manually. The next summary is, is the status of the revolving fund balances. We've, we've been holding our own with the revolving fund. School Lunch at this point stands at $544,000. I know Deb Vaughn, our School Lunch Director, has plans for two new floor mixers, steamers, milk coolers, a new truck. So she's got, committed almost $130,000 spent on improvements to the cafeterias.
Will those, will those come into existence before the end of the fiscal year, John?
I believe so. I know, I know the truck may not, it's 120 days. Circuit breaker has a balance of $742,000. Part of that balance is a, is the remainder from last fiscal year of $399,000. $399,000 I need to spend this year. And depending on how the budget fares through the end of the year, we're going to try to prepay as much as we can for, for next year's tuitions. School Choice, $718,000. Pretty, pretty consistent with prior years. Preschool is doing well, the preschool account. But remember, we pay for the staff throughout the summer. So that, that will decrease by the, by the end of the year. Happy to answer any questions. I know it's a lot. Like I said, I'm happy to meet with.
School building rental, John? This place seems like it's busy all the time.
It's what?
It feels like it's busy all the time.
Yeah, we, it is. A lot of the revenue, like, a lot of the revenue for last weekend and the weekend before that has not been posted yet. I do, and I'm happy to share with, with you, I do have a fairly extensive summary of what we use building rental for. I mean, we've been, we've been using building rental funds for a lot of emergency, emergency capital, not capital, facility improvements or repairs that have been needed.
So in the spirit of looking at our fees based off of the last couple of kind of school committee meetings, are we looking at these fees in a bigger picture to help kind of offset some of the costs? So increasing some of the user fees for organizations outside of obviously school?
We, we do look at the fees. We compare to what other schools are, are charging. And we're, we're comparable. I know there's one. and we're, we're comparable. I know there's one, one fee that we're, Jillian and I are looking at, and that's the rental fee of the gymnasium. So, we are, we are looking at that. But as far as the auditorium, we are comparable to what others are.
Yeah, I just don't want to find ourselves in a similar spot, where for years, like we did with maybe bus fees, we hadn't been raising them. So, I think it's just something we want to make sure that we're continuously looking at going forward.
Right. And, and, and one of the things we, we've done over the last nine months is, we put, we put together a, a kind of a capital planning, Gordon, I think that's something I presented to the capital planning to mi, committee. It, it, it gives you, it's like a seven-page list of athletic equipment, drama equipment, auditorium equipment, technology. So, rather than having to use the, the building rental fund on an emergency basis, we feel as though that's going to allow us to plan a lot better for purchases, rather than, rather than react, when, like, right now, we have the sound system in the gym is no longer working. But, now, I, I have a plan that should be able to identify those things. So, rather than having to try to find $6,000 to fix it, we can plan for those purchases, and, if need be, bundle it for a capital project.
And, and is that plan put in place with the town's facility manager? Do you get feedback from, from that individual, or is there help in that regards with the planning of facility maintenance?
So, I, so, there's a gray area, I'll be the first one to admit it, between what I'm responsible for, and what the facility director is responsible for. I, I, I look at what I'm responsible for is technology, security systems, athletic equipment, auditorium equipment. What else is another? You know, tech, technology, our servers.
And like, operational things versus-
Yes, versus-
Structural things?
Versus the bricks and mortar of the building.
To John's credit, 100 years from now, people are going to find that document he produced, and it'll be the, the gold standard going forward. God bless you, John. That took a long time to put together, but it was, it was perfect now, so that you just have to update it on a go-forward basis. That is really impressive. And, and I, for the sake of our new members, there are, not that you haven't already had to deal with a lot of information already, but there is, I think John or so, we put together, some of these revolving funds can only be used for certain items, and there's a whole criteria for that. So, someday, when you've memorized all this other stuff, you can, you can delve into that as well, just to, just to be aware of it.
I had a, on the, you had mentioned earlier that you had to do the transfer, was it from circuit breaker, or to?
So, I would, I would transfer, I made in a, an entry to transfer tuitions out of our expenses into, we set, we set up two new accounts with, with the town accountant. We set up a extraordinary relief circuit breaker account, and a reserve relief circuit breaker account. It's the only way I'm going to be able to track all this stuff. So, Melanie set up two different accounts. So, when the revenue comes in, she'll deposit it in those accounts. And what I, what I made an entry to transfer tuitions out of our operational budget into that account.
Okay. So, the balance listed here, as of 5:20, that's the actual circuit breaker balance, the 742? Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's our current circuit breaker.
Correct.
Which is different from our extraordinary relief-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because-
And reserve relief.
Okay.
Need a program to follow along.
Yes.
Remember these questions, when you meet with these guys, you say, hey, what about that? Explain that one to me.
The two accounts you just mentioned, the extraordinary relief and the, what was it?
Reserve relief.
Reserve relief. Those aren't on here?
Those aren't on here. I, I will add those.
Okay.
Those are new to us this year. I just have one, when you're done with them. They're not, when I printed out soft write, they, they don't fall under the school yet, so I'll, I'll have to ask Melanie to add that, those to our, my access.
Thank you.
All set, John?
I am, if you are.
Okay. All set. Liz, you said, wanted to add something?
In your packet, we added the dates from the central school, the Mitchell School, and junior, senior high school for building events, and end-of-the-year events, so that if you have a minute and you want to stop by, you know, today was fun, you know, you're watching three, four buses take off to the biome. You know, next week, we'll see them going to the Roger Williams Zoo. From central school, you've got Field Day coming up, you got the talent show, you've got the fun run, you've got Game Day. And then the high school, of course, there's everything. Music recital tonight, started at 5:30, senior scholarships tomorrow. So, there's a lot of information in here. We had the principal send that up, so that you have something, that you would know the dates.
Very good.
There you go.
Public comment, it doesn't look like we have anybody for public comment, so I'm going to-
I don't have public comment. I have unforeseen business, or however it's worded, that crossed my mind during the meeting. Am I allowed to say that?
I didn't, I didn't get it.
Reasonably anticipated. We talked last time about the letter for the bus fees, that there would be a letter created. I was wondering if, does, because the school committee voted on that, does someone on the school committee see it before it goes out to the community? Or how does that work?
We just talked about that the other day. I, I'll have it together. We started doing it, and then we got caught up with some other things. I will send it up to the chair, and then the chair can look at it, and then it'll go out by the end of the week.
Okay.
Okay. And, before we move into action items, one of the things I meant to mention on the, the list of subcommittees, if you're on a particular subcommittee, what I think is missing, there should be a synopsis of the roles and responsibilities of each of the subcommittees, to the extent that when you guys have your first meetings, if you want to start to, you know, sketch those out, and we'll, we'll codify them, or put them into the, the whole program. Because I don't think they exist, Mike. I've never seen exactly what the responsibilities are. Usually, the title tells you in general, but I think it would be helpful-
No, they don't exist.
Right, okay. So, it'd be helpful if we can, we'll work on that, so that when you see a subcommittee, then right below it, you'll see what the role and responsibility is. So, if you join that subcommittee, you have an idea of what's ahead of you. Okay?
Thank you. Action items. Action required to, on the school committee meeting minutes, from the May 7, 2024 meeting, they're in your packet.
Motion to accept.
So, moved. Second?
Second, okay. Thank you. Any discussion on that? And, we'll take a vote. Obviously, U-turn went here, so you can abstain, but McKinnon, I, Pennington-
Fury or I?
I.
And federal, I, and then you two abstain. Okay. Got it? Action required after review to approve accounts payable warrant, 46SV, which I think all of you have signed, and I have not.
I didn't. I haven't signed anything.
Okay. You did not, okay. I'll pass this around to you. We have a motion.
All moved.
Okay. We have a second?
Yeah.
Well, did you actually make the, this is for the accounts payable?
46SV.
Do the proper, I move to approve accounts payable warrant, 46SV dated 5/15/24.
Oh, I didn't say that. In my head, I did. Sorry. Okay?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And one abstention. Amy abstains?
Just until I've had time to-
Right. Fair enough. And, action is required on payroll warrant, 45PS, dated 5/8/24?
So moved.
Move?
Oh, well, oh, yeah, so, you, you said it, so I, I move it.
Okay. Need a second.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm most kind of abstained.
And one abstain, okay?
Two abstains.
Abstain.
Peter abstains as well, too. And, last action item, action required by the school committee on the request of Mr. Evan Chandra, head of EBJSHS, yikes, athletic trainer, to present a student with his diploma at EB graduation, materials enclosed. I didn't look at that to see what his relationship is to the student. Uh-
A mentor.
Oh, he's a mentor, okay.
He's a mentor. I think that the student, I think Evan kept his head in the game, and helped him and supported him, out on the field and off the field.
Oh, okay, great. I don't see that in my packet, but maybe I-
In the back.
It's what's that?
In the back. An email. Yeah, it looks like this has glue on it.
Oh, okay. I have resignation, but not that. Oh, yes, I did. Okay, I see it. Thank you. All right. We have a motion.
All moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Otherwise, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Pass. And, if there's no other action, no other items on our agenda, I take a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.